Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals here at Town Hall on the second floor in the Select Board Hearing Room. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform for convenience only. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. However, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue to be broadcast on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. And to participate remotely from a computer, there's identifying information listed on the agenda, as well as a telephone number for you to dial in and participate as well. First order of business will be to call the meeting to order. I, John Trefethan, am present.
I, Brian Forstall, am present.
I, Daniel May, am present.
I, Stuart Siegel, am present on Zoom.
I, Ryan Sullivan, am present.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Everybody's here. Okay, we have a busy evening this morning. Just a couple of brief notes. Two items that originally had been scheduled to be on the meeting this evening on the agenda are not. One is a special permit request that is not on for today, as well as a 40B permanent request at 35 West Union Street, which also is not on the agenda this evening. We do have on the agenda, however, the continued public hearing for the Chapter 40B comprehensive permit request involving 10-60 Main Street, and also the continued public hearing for the Chapter 40B comprehensive permit involving 61 Waverly Street. And we also have on the agenda a draft decision for the board to consider on the Pleasant Street special permit application. That being said, first item on the agenda will be the continued public hearing on 10-60 Main Street. Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals, this is the notice, will reopen. A public hearing to hear the petition from SLV Ashland LLC requesting a comprehensive permit for Mass General Law Chapter 40B Sections 20-23 to allow for the development of two multifamily-story buildings for 250 apartment units and 337 concealed podium parking spaces. The applicant also proposed to restore and convert the northernmost Mills 7,500 square feet into commercial and retail space, some of it open to the public. Property in question is located at 10-60 Main Street, Assessors Map 14, Lot 128, in the Ashland Overlay Downtown District A (ADD-A) and industrial base zoning. When we were last here, I believe we ended, the applicant had submitted a drawing called a draft schematic plans for the sanctuary at Ashland Mills, and had briefly discussed it for the benefit of the board and the public. And the board was going to, having just received it, was going to review it. And we're going to come back tonight to ask some questions about that, and perhaps some other things. And there were also some landscaping issues, I think, we were going to talk about this evening, Mr. Engler? Yeah, I'm sorry, if you would go up, I guess we, I was talking to myself, I don't mind asking the questions, but I just as well not answer them, too.
Okay. For the record, Jeff Engler, managing partner at SLV Ashland. It was not our thinking, we were talking landscaping tonight, I can say we have, we do have an updated plan that we're going to submit that simply reconciles to the new architectural plan. It's more or less the same, but...
We can delay that to the next meeting, then.
But it's materially the same as what we've shared with you before.
Okay, that's fine, then, we don't need to, we don't need to go on to that. But we are going to talk about the schematic plan, is that correct?
That's my understanding. We also submitted a couple, as you know, we had a conversation with multiple parties a couple of weeks ago on the sewer issue and some considerations, and we submitted for the record. And we don't have to discuss this tonight, we can defer it until we talk decision or permit. But we submitted two draft conditions that we thought the town would be interested in reviewing, just to confirm that we're committed to doing really what Haley Ward asked us to do in their most recent peer review letter. So that was really, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing we submitted.
Okay.
And then, and we are working, one of the things that was asked of us is to prepare renderings, which we are in the process of doing. We want those to be accurate and effective. We've flown a drone, we have different vantage points, you know, it's a coalescing of all the different files, CAD files, and we'll be hoping to present those to you for the next hearing. So I didn't want you to think we forgot about that.
Okay, that would, that would be helpful. I think we are all cognizant of the fact that we're coming rapidly to the end. September 2nd is the date by which we have all focused that our hearing needs to be closed, and there's a lot that needs to be done between now and September 2nd. So...
That's fair, Mr. Chairman, and I don't want to negotiate against myself, but I'll do it anyway. We've worked collaboratively with this board, and recognizing the hearing's supposed to close on September 2nd, that's really just one more, if we stay with the two-week cadence, one more hearing, we need another one or whatnot, we're working in good faith, you know, we'll be prepared to cross that bridge when we can get to it.
Thank you, thank you for mentioning that. It is that time of the year where many of us, even attorneys, take vacations in August, and a vacation date may present some difficulties, which we can talk about, so that may be, that may be appropriate and would be appreciated. Let me just, I think perhaps for the record, explain a little bit to the public how this schematic plan came about, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but at the very beginning of this process, when the application was filed, the previous town planner and our town manager met and discussed various peer reviews that were going to be necessary. One of the ones was architecture. And what was thought between the two was that it might be helpful, where we were dealing with more of a historical building, if we had knowledgeable people who had actual knowledge of Ashland and downtown Ashland, as opposed to hiring a peer review architect from the North Shore, from Boston, or wherever. And as a result of that, there were three gentlemen that were interviewed and agreed to volunteer and serve as an informal peer review committee. One of them was Marcelo Arjona, he's a professional architect and a former member of the Ashland Planning Department, or Planning Board, excuse me. Also Glenn Travis, an Ashland resident, who is an architect, and Ed Hart, a longtime Ashland resident and professional builder. And over the course of several months, they met numerous times with the applicant and with the planners, and discussing what had originally been proposed, and some other things that perhaps could be recommended. And they finally came up with a plan or a proposal that was submitted to us, again, just before the, a day or two before the meeting last time. We thank them for their service, and just so that people know, they do not make decisions for the Zoning Board of Appeals, nor for the town of Ashland. They were volunteers who were asked if they would volunteer their services and their expertise, and they willingly agreed to do so, and spent a great deal of time doing that. However, it is the Zoning Board of Appeals that ultimately retains the authority and will make the decision on what is approved or what is not approved. So just to get that sort of out of the way, so people have a little better understanding about how this all came about, and it didn't just drop out of the air at the last minute. So that being said, is there anything else in the schematic plans that you reviewed last, last time, Mr. Engler, that you want to go over or emphasize again today? My understanding is there's some more issue, some more plans that are coming, more detailed plans, that will ultimately be presented, and it may ask some of the questions that...
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Other than the renderings, which is, let's just put that over to the side, there are a few elements that are being designed. Most of the building has been, but most notably, the facade of what will be the restaurant or whatever, commercial or retail, that was not fully, we did not have a full elevation for that, and that's being prepared. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I think what we represented prior to the last hearing in that packet is representative of the building and all sides and materials and look and feel, which, as you eloquently stated, was prepared iteratively based on the impact and the, based on the comments and the ideas of that subcommittee that you identified. So we were listening to the Ashland architects/citizens in reflecting what we presented, and we did not submit until, in fact, they were satisfied. So, so that's all, I think, I have to say on where we're at.
Okay. Before we open up the question, we'll open it up to the board for questions, and then open it up to the community for questions, both in person and online, I had just a couple of questions, and if you, just to clarify some things, so if you wouldn't mind stepping back to the podium, you may be able to help. The schematic plans that were submitted the last time specifically showed the, sort of an aerial view of the overall development, and it looked, one question that came up was whether or not, on the right-hand side of the building, that was changed at all from the original design.
So, Mr. Chairman, relative to, I think, what is sheet four? Is it this sheet, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Candidly, and this is going to be part of our submission, this is a bit of an outdated plan, so we're going to be updating it. But to answer your question on this facade, it's been changed in that we believe it to be more architecturally interesting. Originally, it was kind of a flat face that extended almost for the entirety of the building length, but we now have... So I think if you turn to page 13, what we've attempted to do, thanks Jasmine, yeah, we have some balconies, some bump outs, change in materials, so we've done that to create, both in response to what we were asked to do, but to create some additional visual interest. Obviously, the materials are different, so the footprint and the length of the building really hasn't changed, but I would say the side has been redesigned to make it more interesting and less flat.
And the setbacks, the same as originally proposed? I know in your waiver request that you filed just very recently, in which we're not going to take up tonight, there were certain setbacks that were being requested. Have they basically stayed the same?
I don't want to put my civil engineer on the spot. I think more or less, if anything, the building that's shown in that image, you know, we had direct entries into the original plan that we've scrapped for various reasons. So I think it's possible that that setback may even be slightly farther away, but I do not believe it to be any closer in any scenario.
Okay. And lastly, the construction material, I mean, it looks like bricks, are they going to actually be bricks, or is it a brick veneer, or what's being proposed?
It's, that's to be determined, but what we, on a recent project, we used, it's like a three-quarters brick, so it's not the full depth, but it's also not the fake crap, I mean, it's real brick.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. Brian, any questions?
No, I'm good at this time. No questions, thank you.
Stu?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Ryan?
Yes, just, just one question that I believe was asked in the email presented to the board, which is, you know, it looks like it's obviously being a shade of red brick, or I would actually call it beige. Was there any consideration to matching the current stone appearance of the existing buildings throughout, and, you know, what was the thought behind that, if you know?
Yeah, originally, I think our first pass at the brick was even more orange than what's shown, and the other materials was, those colors, we're endeavoring to capture the colors of, you know, the existing buildings. If you go back to, Jasmine, maybe go to slide eight? If you, if you look there... Yeah, that's good. So as you see, the new building connected to the existing building, we worked very hard to match the roof, yeah, exactly, and the base, and the stone, and the colors. I think the Architectural Committee liked the brick being slightly offset, but wanted a kind of a federal style. I mean, honestly, you know, if somebody felt like they wanted, you know, it to be a little bit more reddish or something, we're not, you know, this is a representation, we have not selected the actual brick. But I can say, I think it would be, if the brick was like a dark gray or gray, I think it would be lost, you know, I think the contrast provides some interest, and that's, I think, what the Architectural Committee was going for. So that's kind of a long-winded answer at how we arrived at that choice. So I would say, whatever we do is going to be pretty close to that, but I would not say it's going to be exact. But it would not be like a gray brick, or a blue brick, or white brick, or something, it's going to be in the, you know, reddish family.
Thank you. And I guess related to that, on the center building, where you have that bump out with the balconies, so in the building that has the main entrance, that says 50 Main on it, looking at that page eight, is that, is the materials there, is that also, is that going to be a stone matching the existing to remain building, or is that, it's hard to tell from the picture, is that going to be a totally different color?
On the interior of the courtyard?
Yeah.
The gray there, I don't think the base there is going to be the stone that's along the front of the building, like if you look at the furthest-most left-hand lower corner.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, I do have, Bill, are you there?
Yes, hi, I just joined, so it sounds like good timing.
Yeah, just a quick question, this Bill Messenger is our project architect. Bill, were you for the board, your memory of this is better than mine, and obviously you were the one who effectuated it? you were the one who effectuated it, talk a little bit about just the color of the brick, how that was selected, the guidance that we got from the architectural subcommittee, how we were trying to show contrast, how it evolved from what we had originally to what it is now?
Yeah, sure. So we originally, if we're comparing, starting with the old renderings, we just showed sort of a generic, sort of wood-toned, terracotta-toned, it was very loose sort of style building. We always had started with a traditional mill postmodern, you know, post-Civil War style arrangement in large, uniform windows, stacking, stacked orderly facades. So that drive, that notion has always, we've always stayed true to that. But what we've done is we've then just tried to, on the public facades, bring back more of the brick that we're seeing on the existing buildings right now, the manufactured, the red brick building there, but, so maintain the brick, not mimic the brick, because it's the building that exists there now, not the mills, but the existing building, has lesser of a historical relevance, you know, integrity there. So we're looking at a blended brick, so an orangish-red brick that's very contextual to New England, to this neighborhood, and to, and then that will also just pay homage to that site. And then where the mill building comes in, we're changing the material to a darker gray style brick. Again, we're not trying to mimic any of the granite, we're trying to match it, we're just trying to, you know, be complementary to that as it comes in. So we're looking at sort of the same modular style, but just two tones, so one of a red blend, and one is like a more gray, more modernized modular, or probably a wire cut, something clean, brick with some darker facade elements. So we added more brick to that, so we have brick on this, on the main entry facade that we're looking at here, and then there's a break in the courtyard, and then further to the right in the picture, we've, on the, along Main Street, is also brick, and flanking those corners. So the main public facades, they have a lot of weight to them, the windows stack, and then we provide a relief, a metal accent relief at the top floor, not necessarily a large step back or anything, but just a change in material and a nice Federalist-style, modernized Federal-style extended roofline. That was also, what we did is we brought that down with a board and batten, so we have a board and batten on the top. We took the awning of the roof, pulled it out for some shadow and some depth, really helps to exaggerate some of those shadows, and capped the building, which is a nice Federal design, you know, contemporary design move. But we, by pulling it down, it brings the scale of that down even further, and then it creates like a parapet above it, but from a vantage point along, from a pedestrian, I don't think you'll, it'll just bring the scale of that building down, I think, nicely. So that was something we worked on. We also worked on kind of a more defined main entry, so we made it a little bit larger in the front, that we're seeing, with a sort of a storefront, open, a double-height space with the 50 Main on it, and widened it up, widened the size to give it a more grander appearance and feel as you come in, as you come into that special moment of the building. So, and it really helps identify, hey, this is, this is the main entry to the building, because there is a lot of frontage along Main Street as you moved further down.
So, Mr. Chairman, that was quite an answer to how did we arrive at this color of brick? So hopefully...
A little more architecture, sorry about that, yeah, yeah.
No, no, I'm just teasing, Bill, so hopefully you found that a little bit...
Somewhere in that long answer was the answer, so that...
Yeah, exactly. So just giving some of the kind of context and rationale to what was done in response to what we were asked to do.
Very good. Yes?
I just had a quick question that popped up. Would the rooftop units be included in this rendering, or are they hidden? I just wanted to...
No, everything's included in this rendering.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Okay. We will, anybody else on the board have any further questions based on the architect's response, Mr. Mensinger? Okay, then we'll open it up for public comment. We've gone several meetings without public comment, if memory serves me correct, so I just ask people, if you are in the room and you want to comment, please line up along the wall. If you're on Zoom and wish to be heard, please so indicate, and our town planner will let you in. And once again, I totally missed at the very start of the meeting introducing our town planner, Jasmine Farinacci, and our town council, Brian Winter. Usually, I wait until the very end, and then it occurs to me that I haven't introduced them, so I'm getting better. We're halfway through there, at least. Okay. That being said, we usually start with people lined up, so please introduce yourself. Jasmine? Okay, I, okay, I'm sorry for those in the room, but also on Zoom. 55 West Union Street, due to a snafu with publishing notice of the hearing, is not being heard this evening. It will be heard two weeks from tonight, so that if you are on the Zoom meeting, or you're here in person for that, we apologize for the mix-up from the Metro West Daily News, but we could not schedule the hearing and go forward with it because we didn't have the proper legal notice published. Okay, that being said, then, if you'd introduce yourself, name and address, and...
Good evening, Carl Hackinson, 346 Chestnut Street, and I'm a member of the Conservation Commission, Land Stewardship Committee, but this evening, I'm here on my own behalf as a private citizen. And what I'd like to do, if it would please the board, is address some of the questions that Attorney Winter put into the record on it, I believe it was June 10th, at the end of the meeting, at the end of the hearing. Attorney Winter entered eight questions into the record, and Mr. Engler asked for a time to respond to them, which was granted, and I believe that the questions were sent to him in an email a day or two later, and he responded timely a day or two after that. We're all familiar with those questions, yes? Okay, I was under the impression, as were a lot of other people, that those questions would eventually be addressed in public form, both the questions and the answers to those questions, in a public forum. They were not, for whatever reason. They were posted on the website, but no one knew that they were posted on the website. Eventually, some of us got copies of that from the website, and I think they're really good questions, and I think they're very, very relevant to this application. And so if the chair would indulge me, I would like to address some of those, as one for Attorney Winter, one for the board, and several for Mr. Engler to elaborate on.
You know, we generally try and keep the questions brief, but as long as you can move quickly through these, we'll go ahead and...
I'll move as quickly as possible. I would like if it's okay.
We'll give you the hook when the time comes, if it's too long, how's that?
That's fine. I'd like to read the question, read the answer, for accuracy's sake, so it's probably going to take me longer to read the question and the answer than for us to respond to them.
I mean, just for the record, the written questions and the written answers have been entered into the record, so that they are part of the hearing record.
I understand that...
I understand your point about, nobody reads the list on the computer, so nobody really knows what's what, and, you know, that's just the way the public is, I guess, but go ahead.
Okay, I guess my first question is to Attorney Winter. Where did those questions emanate from? Were they all your questions, or were they culled from somewhere else?
You may answer. Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to the speaker. So I don't think it would be a surprise to anyone that I communicate with town staff and department heads and other people in town hall, and I receive questions from various sources. I can't honestly recall specifically where any particular question came from, but I often receive them, I collect them. If they haven't been brought up by the board, you may recall that at times, when the chair pulls the board for questions, he may ask staff as well, including myself, if we have any questions, and so I wait for that moment, and so I collected those questions from various town hall sources. I think I may have added one or two of my own, and then when the opportunity arose, with the chair's permission, I asked them on the record.
Okay, thank you. So the first question I'd like to deal with is the last question that council posed to the applicant, and I'll read it. It says, "The applicant has requested waivers for both the local wetlands, stormwater bylaw. Hancock appears to be deferring those matters to the zoning board. Zoning board requested comment from the Conservation Commission. However, the Conservation Commission on January 14th, 2025, and May 28th, 2025, reported to the zoning board that it had insufficient information to provide any comment or recommendation as to the waivers. We understand that, as the applicant has stated at the public hearing, there will be a separate filing under the Wetlands Protection Act with the Concom, but the zoning board will need sufficient information to deliberate on the requested waivers of the wetlands and stormwater bylaws. When and how do you intend to provide that information to the zoning board and the Conservation Commission's consideration? If you believe it has already been submitted, please direct us to those submissions, so we can discuss with the zoning board, the Concom, and the peer review." That was the question. The answer is, "Over the course of the public hearing process, we have provided an exhaustive amount of detail to the town's civil peer review consultant, who has prepared and completed its peer review. Hancock Associates' final report provides enough detail and guidance for the board to effectively review our final waiver request." So I guess my question to the ZBA is, do you agree with that answer? Do you have enough information to understand what it is that you're waiving, or what the applicant is asking you to waive?
I'll answer, just as one member of the board, we haven't discussed, as a board, whether we have sufficient evidence to grant that waiver or not. We have the peer review report and supplemental report that would have made its findings. Frankly, those go back meetings many months ago, and as part of our discussion about this case, once the hearing closes, and we then have the 40-day period in which to create a decision, we will have to discuss, or will discuss, whether or not we've got enough information to grant the waiver requests or not. The applicant, my understanding is, has submitted what it feels is sufficient to meet its burden to request us to waive the local ordinances, and that's what it's going to sink or swim on with that request.
Okay, would any of the other board members want to weigh in on that?
Well, I'm not sure what purpose is going to be gained by that at this point. You know, we've got a waiver request, along with another, a number of other waiver requests that are, have just been recently filed, and probably some more that will be filed between now and when we ultimately have to deal with them. I'm not sure what purpose, getting all the members of the committee to each say, well, as of now, we do or we don't, we haven't started to deliberate. Maybe after we start to deliberate, opinions will change, so I'm not sure what we go. And Mr. Engler is raising his hand, so I don't know what, if anything, can be, he wishes to add to this.
I don't understand. It may be challenging for us to share this mic height-wise.
I mean, I would just add, Mr. Chairman, when we do talk about the waivers, it's our intent, I mean, we believe our waiver list is comprehensive, and we've provided explanations. What I planned to that evening is to have our civil engineering team, and our architectural team, and wetland scientists here to verbally help provide context or explanation for the board's benefit. So we think the waiver list stands on its own, but if the board seeks, can you help me explain that, or dumb it down, or what have you, we'll have a full team here to, some of them are very, will take 10 seconds, but some of them are a little bit more in-depth.
Thank you. My next question is, the question reads, what contaminants might either be added to the ecosystem, or in this case, in the case of this site, what contaminants may be brought to the surface? The answer to that is, all soil, and this gets a little bit complicated here, all soils and subsurface materials will need to be handled or disposed of in accordance with the remedial action plan, which is regulated by the Department of Environmental Protection. We've completed all tasks required by DEP as part of our remedial action plan. DEP is requiring a status update in July regarding progress on our 40B application. At that time, they may ask us to resample the groundwater and to make everything, to make sure everything is current. We don't expect any significant changes from previous results. As it relates to the activity and use limitation currently in place, we have been in contact with DEP regarding the proposed development and some preliminary construction concepts. We anticipate that this will be, that this will be refiled in a final AOL with DEP after a new vapor barrier has been installed over the contaminated area. The final AOL refiling can't occur until we have installed the vapor barrier, which would be during construction. We expect to draft an AOL with mass DEP for its review later this summer to confirm all current assumptions. And I guess my question is that there was supposed to be another filing with DEP by end of July, assuming that was done?
I believe we just received a copy of a report from the consultant that was working with DEP on the groundwater and whatnot. It was dated, I think, the very end of July. It just got sent to us, we received it maybe Friday, and haven't had a chance to send that out to our peer reviewer at all, but there has been a response that apparently was indicated, and depending upon what our peer reviewer indicates, whether there's anything further that needs to be done. My understanding is that subject is a subject that is not something within the ZBA's control. It's under the control of the DEP because of the contaminated site that they've retained control over, and we're just being notified of it and kept advised of the status of it. Obviously, it's a concern of all of us to have a contaminated site, this being the subject of some construction, and what can or cannot happen there. And apparently, the consultant filed the report. I'm sure the DEP hasn't worked on it as yet. I read it, and frankly, it's a lot of very technical, environmental mumbo jumbo, but we will see what the experts say once they've had a chance to review it.
Okay. Well, in answer to my question, the record can show that Mr. Engler nodded yes to my question. So do you not want to discuss this question? This question was asked at a ZBA meeting.
Well, it was asked...
The question is actually, Mr. Chair, what contaminants might be added to the ecosystem or brought to the surface, and the answer doesn't speak to the question. That's my point.
There's no question about that, so I don't know. And I'm not sure how anybody would know until they actually start to enter to the construction...
Well, I'm not asking you, I'm asking the applicant.
Well, my, well, my understanding is, from what the applicant has submitted as part of its construction plan, is that there's going to be a qualified expert who's going to oversee the construction and the removal of any dirt or anything else that's removed, until that process is... Until that process is started, I'm not sure how you can answer what contamination is going to be removed. I'll let the applicant answer that. But I don't know how you know what's going to be removed until you remove it. And if it's contaminated, it needs to be dealt with.
Well, I'm assuming that they've done tests on the site at this point. So it seems like that information should be available. Could the applicant explain to the people what a vapor barrier is and why it's required at the site?
If there's somebody, he certainly can. If he's got an engineer here who could answer or something, that would be, I have no problem with that, sure. If you could just identify yourself, sir, so that it's clear who's talking. Thank you.
For the record, John Cusick with Bowler Engineering. In layman's terms, a vapor barrier is essentially a piece of membrane, really, that just goes on the ground, underneath the building, that prevents any gases and vapors from entering the building. Simply put, what a barrier is.
Why is it required in this site?
Through the chair, that would come from the environmental reports and the environmental consultants.
Okay.
Typically, if it's a DEP requirement based on what soils are present, that's when they need to do it.
Okay. And if I recall correctly, in the plans, there were plans to have vapor barriers installed at part of the garage to allow the vapors to come from under the ground and be safely...
Passed through.
Passed through?
Yep, that's correct.
Now, hopefully, that's sufficient, Mr. Hackenson.
I'm sorry?
Hopefully, that's an answer sufficient.
No, it's kind of evasive, the reason it's being required.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, the intimation that we're dealing with these environmental issues, with, you know, a cavalier attitude, we don't expect rose petals to be thrown, but the town should be happy about what's going on. There is a contaminated site out there right now. There's rainwater leaching through the soils into the ground. There's all sorts of other junk. As part of our process, we're going to be cleaning that up and doing it in accordance with DEP, who's going to be closely monitoring this. We have additional groundwater sampling scheduled. We have a general idea of what's in the ground. But until we're permitted, then we will do an extensive analysis to know fully, what's called a full precar characterization of the site, to know exactly. And then it is very, very regimented on what soil types those are, for lack of a better term. Like, are they really contaminated? Kind of contaminated, just a little bit? And based on that, if we are to take them off the site, they have to go to specifically designated locations. This is a very, very regimented process. There is no room for interpretation, and we need to meet DEP's requirements in order to do all this. Without meeting those requirements, we're screwed. We're stuck, and we don't have a project. So we're taking this with all the seriousness that anybody can take it. But to allege that we're being evasive as to what's going on, that's not a characterization that I'll live with, because it's not true. We are doing everything in accordance to the way it needs to be done, in the timeline that it needs to be done. Thank you.
One more to wrap up, perhaps? We have a number of people that are in line to ask questions.
Yeah, okay. I'm a little bit disappointed that asking pointed questions comes across as being cavalier. But the reason that it's being put in is because it's a contaminated site. Their test wells have elevated PCE levels there, and that's why this vapor barrier is being put in. So my last question would be, have you ever put in a vapor barrier in any of your other developments? And how long do those vapor barriers last?
I can't answer the second one. The first one is yes. I mean, in Massachusetts, most sites these days are contaminated. All right? There's no pristine, you know, open fields anymore with great soils. So vapor barriers are pretty common in a lot of big developments, particularly reuses of sites. I can't say how long. I can endeavor to find that out from Mr. Campbell. But presumably, you know, of a length that satisfies DEP that they're going to be in place for, you know, the same length that this building will exist.
The answer is 20 years. They last 20 years.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Somebody from online has a question. Amanda, if you're there and you have a question, if you could identify yourself to the record and...
Yeah, of course. My name's Amanda Walsh, Pine Hill Road. I wanted to thank everyone who worked on this. I think this plan is a big...
We can't hear you.
Oh, no. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Amanda Walsh, Pine Hill Road. I wanted to thank everyone who worked on this. I think this plan is a big update compared to the original plan. It's a great way to update the current mill while keeping the historical mill look. I do have a couple of questions and comments. So the first one is something that would be great is if you could potentially consider matching the brick color to what has been used on Bagel Table, just to potentially make the spaces look more cohesive. I think that would be a great, you know, design feature. The next one is, one of the concerns is, you know, the brick's looking realistic. There's a building that is currently going up in downtown Marlborough, and you can definitely tell the brick is fake. The brick is also a darker red color in Marlborough, and has a dark siding as well. And you can't really tell, there's a great contrast there. I really like the rendering and what you've created, and I just wanted to call that out. I think whether it's real brick or, you know, like you had mentioned, the three-fourths brick, I think that that would be really great and something I'd appreciate the developer considering. The next one I have is the space in between the buildings and the mockups currently look like it's all pavement. Is that going to be true? Or will they be landscaping there? That'd be great to know from the developer. The fourth point I have is, I really like the white color you used in the interior. I think that's a really nice contrasting color. When you do end up picking the final colors for that siding, I think it'd be nice if you would consider like the town hall color or potentially the Bagel Table color. Again, just trying to blend the downtown area and make it look cohesive. And my last comment is, I think it'd be great if there was nice lighting against the side of the brick to showcase it at night. I'm not sure if it's possible to see a rendering of what this would look like at night, but I think it's a great way to, you know, or an opportunity to showcase this further. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next?
Annie Mantle, Newcastle Road. Ashland's Town Center 1060 Main Street proposal is an unfortunate example of developers using 40B to build strictly for profit, not for the money.
Ms. Mantle, unless you have something specifically to address to this project, not 40B in general, or as a state law, we're going to have to move on to someone else.
Ashland's comprehensive plan created for continued manageable growth is being ignored. Historical commission objects to the demolishing of historical buildings, especially to build a 250-unit, six-story-in-the-back 40B complex. Ashland zoning limits buildings to three stories in keeping with the mostly one-story buildings in town. Try to imagine an industrial-looking, six-story, 250-unit apartment complex in a small downtown of one-story colonial-style buildings. In addition, the property is in a flood zone on the Sudbury River, contaminated by the Superfund site, Nynza. When the river floods, all cars will need to be moved, but there is no place to put 300 cars and no way to move them. I have more, but I will end there.
Thank you. It looks like there's a Julie online who would be next. We alternate one and one. But you're next after Julie.
Hello. Julie Nardone, 86 Ellet Street. I have a question, if Mr. Angler might answer it? And I have a comment. And I apologize for being a little late to the party. January, the first meeting of this 40B, Mr. Angler said that he had been working with the town for 18 months. That would have been, I don't know, August, September 2023. So I guess my, I should say, curiosity is, how did, I think it's, uh... Come to, come to the town of Ashland to work on this 40B? You know, there had been a different project. So I'm just curious how this came about.
Well, I'm going to answer that, if I may. Developers don't just come in with some papers and file them with town, at town, with the town clerk and file a process. They meet with the planning department typically. They can meet with the town manager. They can meet with other people in town to find out what concerns are, what possibilities are, what might proceed, what might meet with opposition, et cetera. So that it all develops over a course of time to it finally reaches a point where the developer feels it's at a point where it can file a proposal, a permit request. Not to say that the town agrees with what's being filed or what's being proposed, but that's typically how it works. So that the first hearing in this matter was back in January. The proposal was filed in December, and I'm sure that the developer had a meeting with the town planning department, and the town planner at the time, assistant town planner, probably with the town manager and perhaps with other political entities in town to discuss what was being proposed. And that probably goes back a good year and a half.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, did this company just wander into the town and say, "Wow, that would be a great site for an apartment complex"? Or was the...
I'm not sure that's relevant anymore. We're here at a hearing on an application that's been before us for months and which we ultimately have to make a decision whether to allow a 40B proposal with restrictions or not. So what went into the developer's decision-making process as to whether it was a good opportunity or not, I don't think is relevant anymore. Although presumably, they wouldn't have done it if they didn't think it was an opportunity.
And then my comment, I think I can make it. I guess I'm confused based on a document that I had gotten from the town. How parts of the project are being built on foundations that are being removed? Because the historic mill exemption from this document says you need to build on the foundation. So I'm just confused about this project. It's 310 PMR 10.58. It was advised by DEP, since we're talking about DEP, northeast region. And I guess I'm just genuinely confused because I read it.
I'm not sure we can help, other than the DEP is, has certain authority over the site. The board has no authority over the site or with any requirements the DEP may or may not make. And we abide by what rulings they make. The developer has to seek their approval on certain things and abide by their approval. And the Conservation Commission ultimately has authority over state law on storm water and flood zone. So it's multiple, multiple agencies have different roles to play in this process. Okay? I think so. Yes, ma'am?
Carolyn Bell, Concord Street, Ashland. I'm not against building. I believe people need a place to live. I don't believe people should be homeless and so forth. My concern is the traffic, because I live in a street parallel to Main Street. And I realize that you've got 250 approximately cars in the morning going onto two-lane streets. If two people live in an apartment and both have jobs and both are driving out, you know, I mean, there are all kinds of variations, but you're still talking about something like 200 cars around 5:00 o'clock at night to 7:00 o'clock at night and 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. I've lived in my house long enough to be able to understand the traffic patterns that are happening from my house. From my front door, I watched the bridge from 135 over into Front Street and Fountain Street. Before the new school was built, the Menda School, we would have buses, traffic, parents, driving the kids to and from. And they would be locked in along the street both ways. And then sometimes they would be jammed up over by the bridge, light or no light. Because now the school built a great big parking lot. That's been alleviated. But it's still, you know, that at 7:30 in the morning, there are cars going back and forth. If you understand that if you turn a right and go down to Raymond Marquetti, I'm not sure there's even a sidewalk there for kids who are going to walk to school. If you go down Concord Street, there's only half a sidewalk, and then you have to go on the other side of the street. It's not a full sidewalk. There's no granite curbing. It's just a little tar thing. So what you've got, you've got two lane, two narrow lanes. And then, you know, every direction, they go Pine Hill Road, it's two lanes. No sidewalks up there.
Ma'am, I don't want to cut you off, but we...
Well, I'm done. But I think somebody should address the fact that we're going to have 200 cars coming out onto two-lane roads with no sidewalks. And how's that going to happen? And you've got the fire trucks and the police coming over that bridge?
We've spent at least four hearings involved with traffic, with traffic consultants for both the developer and peer review for the town, trying to work out the best traffic configuration that could be worked out for this site. Is it perfect? I'm sure it is not, but we've spent as much time as we've been able to on that. And I understand it's not to everybody's satisfaction.
I know that at one hearing I was at, they talked about the ingress and the egress. But I didn't hear anything about the traffic going up all these two-lane streets. Is that going to be addressed?
We have addressed, the traffic consultants addressed that extensively.
And what's the result of their...
The results is that there's going to be certain traffic impacts which can be ameliorated to a certain extent and which will increase traffic locally as well, in summary.
So we're going to have traffic jams up and down?
An increased traffic is not a basis to deny a request for a comprehensive 40B project.
No, but the size of the project. 200 cars, 250 cars, that's a lot of cars.
Okay. We need to move on. Thank you. I think you're next.
Hi, Robert, Chair, 41 Bay Colony Drive. It's good to see you folks again. Welcome to our new planner, John. Thank you, guys, for doing all this. Since I left public service, I'm very much appreciative of the kind of effort that people put in.
Now that you've buttered us up.
Yeah, right, okay, so here's my question. So, and I also, I have to apologize. I was, I met this gentleman when we first started this process. Would have been February, I think, of '24, anyway. So a couple of quick questions. I apologize if I missed things and followed up. But I'm also, right now, the MBTA, our representative, the MBTA Advisory Board. So, and, um, you know, where, the, the Framingham-Wisster, now Springfield line, is a very important commuter rail line. It's kind of unique here. There's big statewide plans for it. And so part of those plans, and I think you are aware of this, but I'm not sure it's being addressed, is that the east-west trains are going to be on a 30-minute schedule. They, um, you know, they think they have the facilities to do that and they're going to do it. So that's potentially, you know, 15-minute trains coming every 15 minutes at that crossing. Very important. And I know you're saying that traffic is not a, a means to, um, reduce a project, but I think that's a key thing. That we're, we're a unique rail cross. There's only, there's four grade crossings in the whole line, Toon and Ashland, Toon and Framingham. So this is a unique location. And I would just urge you to look very closely that the traffic study really should incorporate that information. And it's new information. It's just really, the T just put this in their capital plan like six months ago. So that's kind of new, but we need to deal with it. Unfortunately, both us and the developer are gonna have to live with this commuter now regional rail. It's a major initiative now. So I wanted to just make that, uh, clear, plain, to make sure that people address that. And, um, the, the other thing, and when I was on the board, we talked a lot about the economic analysis. So I don't know where that goes now, but in order to justify how many units, there's always an economic analysis with a 40B, right? So I suggest that's another key area to look at. So for my, you know, now uninvolved point of view, that would be my suggestion.
Well, I believe that we have limited economic analysis up until a certain point when we can then take that involved and Town Council could speak better about that.
Attorney Winter was a great guy for that. You can ask ever source, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeSoni.
Yes, good evening. Mark DeSoni, 119 Main Street. Yes, I've been here to, for almost all of these meetings. And it has been an education, sometimes a fertility and sometimes a frustration. I'm gonna comment to the board the attitude that I'm getting back to myself from, from Mr. Chairman. And I'm, I'm just gonna just be constructive. I ask questions. I try to get answers. And I know that sometimes the questions I ask are outside the scope of the proceedings. Sometimes, and that's why I get frustrated from there. And I, the last meeting we had, I tried asking questions about the town and he said it was out of the scope of the project agenda. I went back to my place, 119 Main Street, and I e, I'd emailed messages to our select, our select president, Kevin Spilker, and I got a response. I sent my, I sent the response when I got back and I CC'd it throughout the whole town hall. So I know that people got my question, my statement and the response. That's one. Two would be, why are you answering for the rest of your board members when they can have the freedom of speech to talk? Why are you answering for them?
Somebody has to run the meeting, uh, and that's, falls upon me as chairman. Any of the fellow, my fellow board members are free to talk or ask questions at any time they wish to. In fact, some have over the course of time. I don't control them. I don't limit them in any way, shape, or form. But someone has to run the meeting or else we have chaos, as my fellow board member Brian just whispered. So that's what we try and do. It may not be to everybody's approval, but I do the best I can. If you object to the way I run meetings or the way I chair the board, zoning board of appeals, then feel free to file your complaint with the, uh, select board who are my bosses.
That was one of the emails that I got that I CC'd. I already did that.
Fine. I'm up for reappointment September 1st, so-
I'm not complaining personally about- I'm not complaining personally about-
They choose not to appoint me.
This is why I get frustrated because you're trying to interrupt me for my mis-sentence. I'm not personally attacking. I'm just observing.
Can we focus on the hearing tonight?
The hearing, yes.
Okay.
And we better, we fully understand if all the boards had their talk opinions, if they get a chance to say what they say. Everybody, us, us citizens, the project person, will be understanding better what everybody's thinking and saying once they hear it from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeSoni. Sir, you're next.
Yeah, Cliff Wilson, 378 Elliott Street. Uh, I have basically just two things. The, the first one, um, is kind of a, an objection to the architect's previous discussion where, it, it may be all wrong, but it seems to me that he was trying to separate the current number 50 main from the other buildings and, and trying to say that that's not a bill, a mill or wasn't a mill or something. And quite honestly, I kind of grew up in that building because my father was, was treasurer of Lombard and I spent a lot of time in the, all of the buildings as a kid and go from one end to the other. The upstairs was offices. The lower portion was certainly as much of a mill as any of the other buildings that existed. So I just wanted to clarify that for, for all of you because, uh, also that building, because I've heard various things, that building was built in 1943. It wasn't built in 1950. It wasn't built in '52. It was built in '43 by the Navy so that the Navy, uh, so that Lombard could perform work for the Navy during the war. My real question, that's just inside, sorry about that. My real question is this. What happens? What, what is the plan? Just in case the current people or whoever comes down the road gets into the, gets the process moving, everything's going according to plan, they tear buildings down, you got a big hole in the ground, and for whatever reason, I don't know, the partners die, the plane crashes, the, the project stops. What happens for the town? What can, what is in the process to protect the town? Just in case, that's all I'm asking, is just in case something were to happen that were to stop the plan, what protection is there for the town? That's my question. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to the speaker, there are various conditions and time periods that are imposed through the comprehensive permit. One standard condition is a construction management plan, so we're not having too much open at any one given moment. There's timelines for the, uh, the beginning of construction to commence through the completion of construction. If the developer has any struggle with that, they can come back and ask for an extension. But the point is, is that, um, once the permit leaves here, there are a couple of other places it has to go before it's final and a building permit is pulled and construction gets underway. But from that very first moment through the closeout of the project, there's peer reviews watching, there's security in place for the construction, there are construction management schedules, there are inspections that occur and a whole lot of parties that are observing the, the progress of that construction to avoid a situation just like that, where a project gets underway and it's either a moonscape or a crater or it's a half-built project that doesn't comply and needs to be brought back into compliance. So there are a whole lot of people that conduct supervisory activities, inspection activities in order to make sure a project stays on track like that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. My name is Joseph Mignani, 2 Hopper Lane, currently retired from the Police Department and current, uh, select board chair. I have a few, uh, concerns with respect to the discussion that you had earlier this evening with the, um, architectural designs of the, uh, the brick using the certain color bricks. When we were doing the, um, public safety building, we had a group of, uh, people from the town sit down with us and talk about trying to make things right across the board, make everything even right across the board. So there was some symmetry with the building, so everything wasn't piecemeal. You had this color, you had that color. There was a sort of a, a theme and the design theme with respect to the building and, and how it would flow throughout the town. I don't know if that's something that you folks have thought about, but I know that the colored brick, and I know this is very trivial compared, but it's not trivial to some people. If this is, if this is built that way, we will be seeing this for the rest of my, uh, our lives. Mine a lot shorter than yours, but however. My point being is, is I don't know if that's been discussed or, or could be discussed. And then I ask, I have a point of, uh, clarification with respect to, uh, procedure. You mentioned that the, uh, excuse me, you mentioned that the, um, hearing, uh, is set to close on September 4th. Is that correct?
September 2nd.
Sept, I'm sorry, September 2nd, so that's even sooner. My, my question is, what happens if you folks do not get the proper information for you folks to make a decision and a complete decision and a thorough decision for this project? Can that hearing be extended or how, what, what's the next step on that?
I mean, with the, uh, approval of the, the applicant, the September 2nd date can be extended to, uh, have additional evidence taken. Or we get the evidence that we need and we close the hearing on September 2nd. And then we have 40 days in which to, uh, discuss a decision. And given that we meet every two weeks, 40 days would be basically, um, not quite three meetings. In my experience with 40Bs, and I've been involved in, I think, two or three, we've never reached the point where we don't reach an agreement with the applicant to extend the time to enable us to get the information we need. It's obviously to the applicant's benefit as well, as long as we're moving forward. If we're dragging our feet, that's something else again, but I don't think the applicant would feel that way about us in this process. And I don't feel, I, for one, don't feel that way about the applicant. This has been a very complicated, um, procedure.
To say the least.
So.
To say the least. And it's not only that procedure, but it's also the mindset of the, the entire town that this project is definitely going to affect Ashland as a whole and what we were, once were and what we will be. So, being a lifelong resident here, I, I, I can tell you that Jeff and I have the opportunity to agree to disagree on some of the traffic study information that you provided, and I still say that needs to be tweaked in some way, shape, or form because you folks never looked at, and I know this is not part of this discussion. You've already had meetings with respect to your, your traffic studies. But there are many residents that live on the side streets that were mentioned today, basically, that are concerned about the extra flow of traffic coming through that area. And you and I, John, have had that conversation about that. So I just, I just don't want these little things to be forgotten and, you know, put on, put on the back burner because they mean something to everybody in this town, especially if neighborhoods are going to be impacted by additional traffic.
And speaking just for myself and not for the other four members on the board, but I, um, feel the pressure involved in this decision.
I know you do.
It's an important decision for the town compared to other 40B projects that we've been involved in. So we'll make the decision the best we can based on the evidence that we have and guidance of council. And we'll do the best we can. And I'll retire to Florida. No, I'm not.
Yes, sir.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, just, um, kind of reiterate a point that, that may be implicit, but it's probably worth saying explicitly. There's a, a side to this process that, that the public might not see. You see the information being added to the website. You see us discussing it. But you have the planner, you have my office, Town Council's office. You also have a traffic consultant, civil, you know, peer reviewers and other professional experts participating in this. And we're all keeping track of the information flowing. We're, we're, we're keeping a scorecard, if you will, what questions were asked, what information was asked for, whether or not we got responses, whether or not those responses were complete, whether they were sufficient and so on and so forth. And the whole goal of that is not only to get the right information about the right topics so that the, uh, the public hearing is as fleshed out as it can be, but also to make sure that we don't miss any of the things that you just mentioned, right? Because, uh, over the course of many months of a public hearing, lots of questions get raised and things get asked for. We want to make sure that nothing slips through the cracks. And so, beginning from, from before we even get the application, we start evaluating what we need to know in order to get to the point where we feel comfortable closing the public hearing. And as we're getting closer to the end of this process, we, we reevaluate. We go back through all those lists and make sure that when we get to the end of the public hearing, that we have a closeout letter on each one of those to make sure that we're not in the uncomfortable position of running out of time, but still not having the answers to those questions. So we back way up, try to make sure that when we are in a position to close the public hearing, we can say in good faith that we have a complete and, and, um, accurate record on which they can then go into their deliberations.
Okay, and one, just, just to add further to, to what you just mentioned, I think that's, that's great and I appreciate that, that procedure. But if you don't get all the information or you don't receive that information in a timely fashion, and, and it's not to stand as being done deliberately, it's just, it, it's just fact. Sometimes things happen that you don't get the information right away. I don't want you folks to be put on, you know, on the grill because you have a timetable that has to be met and you're rushing through this. And you, sometimes when you rush through things, things don't get done the way they should. Things fall through the cracks. And by hell, this, this project can't fall through the cracks in any way, shape, and form because it's too important and it's, it's too large, especially in the location that it's at. I'm not knocking Jeff in any way, shape, and form, but he, he's making, he's out to make money and, and, and good for you and that, that's fine. But at the same token, what you're doing totally impacts us, our, us as citizens as a whole. And we're trying to stifle the effect of the Pucker effect, if you don't mind me using anything less than that, but of how, of how we have to deal with this project. I just want to make sure you folks have the time to sit down and rekindle all the information and re, rehash all that information that's been presented to you so that you don't make an improper, uh, decision or fail to add something that you've thought about adding and you didn't do it because you ran to the gun. I just want to make sure you folks have the time to do it properly, thoroughly, and correctly for the town.
I feel comfortable that I will, and the board will have received the information we need to have received, uh, by the time we close the hearing.
Okay. And one last thing with respect to the EPA and DEP. I was on the A&amp;S Oversight Committee. The D nap that's coming off of Cherry Street right now, uh, is, it's, it's not good. You know, that's coming from, from deep bedrock. But there's a procedure right now that's, hopefully, will help eliminate this down the road. But that doesn't mean that your site is going to be clean because what's happening further down Cherry Street. There, there are, there are samples that need to be done and, and I worry about your construction people and the folks that are working on the site have the proper equipment and, um, outfits that have to be worn. Should something happen, if you dig and you come into something like that, is there a procedure- procedure that you have to follow, or you have already written, should you come across any hazardous waste materials upon your, on your digging? Does it stop? Do you sit back and look at it, and you get the DEP in? You said, I believe it was you, Jeff, that said something about the fact there will be a DEP person on site, or did I misunderstand that?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Engler.
As I advance in age, my memory is getting worse and worse. There was a lot of questions in there I'll try to answer. So, we already know there's contaminants in the site, there's not going to be any surprise when we get out there. Secondly, the contractors and subcontractors we work with aren't good at this, they're great, and we have a very rigorous, as I said earlier, relative to DEP, how we have to handle this. So that involves transportation of materials, it involves what they need to wear, it involves equipment, the whole nine, all of that will need to be approved by DEP, it'll be approved by the building inspector, it'll be closely and rigorously reviewed, and we need to meet all I's and T's crossed for that whole process. Secondly, you know, we take very seriously this project. I know it's like not up in the cornfield on the edge of town, it's right in the middle, and we have every objective and aspiration to make this a project that is going to be good for the town. I mean, some people are resistant to change, and that's okay, I get that, but we feel quite confident at the end of the day, this is going to be a great project for the town of Ashland, it's really going to be an economic development boon, it's going to help a lot of the existing commercial tenants and otherwise. I don't want to digress. I would also say, you know, the characterization that this is being rushed through, I mean, we've been at this since January, we've exhaustively talked about lots and lots of things, and I will go on record to say, I don't want the board to feel rushed, and if we need another hearing, or two, we'll work that out, or we'll address that as the time comes. And lastly, and I think the board would agree, at the conclusion of every public hearing, I make a question to the board, what is your expectation of us? What are you expecting us to submit? Have I missed anything? So there's no, like, lots of things hanging off in the stratosphere that haven't been submitted. I mean, we didn't move off traffic until everybody was collectively satisfied, we were done. We didn't move off civil until Hancock and everybody. So it's been a comprehensive, thorough process, and at the end of the hearing, I'll say the same thing tonight, what are we doing at the next hearing? What does the board need from me? And then I have a question, I don't know if now, oh, I did have one specific question, or my partner would kill me, but there's been a lot of talk about the brick tonight, and the color, and the like. Through council, I would be comfortable with the condition that said something to the extent of, and I'm paraphrasing, you know, post-building permit, when we're sourcing materials, because we don't want to represent something, and then we can't get the manufacturer, the color's a little different, we would come back before the design subcommittee that we found to be very astute and smart, and say, guys, these are kind of, these are the samples, this is what we have, what do you think? Not necessarily hick for us, but is this consistent with, you know, what we've represented? And we can't do that, as people that have been through a construction process would know, we can't do that now, because when it comes time to buy, we don't know who we're buying from, we don't know what they have available, but we know ultimately what the intent is, and we would sit down and say, here are the three choices of the burnt orange, or brick red, or whatever we're coloring it, do you have a strong preference for either of them? And if council wants to include something of that nature in the decision, we would be comfortable with that, because we know it's important to the town.
Okay, just so we're clear, the last two people for public comment are standing, so.
I want to say thank you.
I want to thank you, thanks, Jeff, for your comments, I appreciate that.
Nobody else decides they want to get up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Glenn Travis, I live at 35 Franklin Road, and I have a business in town, GMT Home Designs. I was specifically asked by Michael Herbert to be on this architectural review committee. I've been able to spend time with Jeff and Bill and the folks at Embark for a great number of months, and we have painstakingly gone through, and for the record, our area of expertise that we were looking at was specifically the facade of the building. And so when we first looked at the material choices, we had very specific and strong feedback that we wanted to give to Jeff and his team. I will say that I was beyond pleasantly surprised at the level of humility that we received from the architecture firm, listening to what myself and Marcela in particular had to say and share, and a metamorphosis took place. And so I'm not a big fan of orange, I don't think orange has a place in Ashland. I've been a resident here since 2003. The brick was talked about a lot. Did I say a lot? A lot. And so Bill and I would, Bill, the project architect, would laugh, because he knew I would bring that up on a number of different occasions, when it wasn't quite the color I was looking for. So clearly, as someone that lives here, that works here, I'm in this building quite a bit, there were conversations about this building, even the windows, the cladding, the color of the windows, that all came into play, that Jeff and his team took our considerations and ran with. So what you saw tonight with those renderings is far superior than where we started. The reason why I'm saying this to all of you is that Jeff is the type of individual that takes input and wants to do things right, that wants to represent what we want here in Ashland. Again, we didn't speak to the massing, we spoke to the cladding colors. So those mill buildings were very important to myself, to Marcela, to the architectural significance here in town. That's why you saw the building that's connected to that second mill building have a dark cladding on the top and the granite blow to mimic what was happening in the front, where initially it was white, and it was a huge contrast. And so we wanted that to blend in architecturally, and then we also wanted to see some more recesses on the side elevations, which Jeff spoke to earlier tonight. The reason I came tonight was to communicate that I've spent hours of my personal time looking at this massing, and if anyone has any questions or concerns about the architectural piece, I'm right here on Pleasant Street, feel free to call my office, happy to talk further with you about that. It sounds like we're going to look at the brick even more terrific, happy to do so, because when I moved here in 2003, there was 12,000 people in town. Now there's close to 20,000 people in town, 8,000 more residents with a lot more cars. Guess what? Ashland has figured it out. And I think with this building at the corner, it is a critical piece of architecture impacting our town, and the traffic patterns, sure, but Ashland along the way, in the time I've been here, has figured out, how do we deal with the traffic patterns? I'm excited to see where Ashland is at, and I'm excited to see where it's going, and I applaud the work that's being done. Thank you.
And on behalf of the board, thank you and the other volunteers on the committee who volunteered their time to serve as a, in essence, a peer review on the architecture with a local feel to it, as opposed to architecture from, or an architect from another part of the state who might not appreciate the significance of the millwork. And yes, for our final public comment.
Good evening. Marcia Rennie, Bay Colony Drive, and I am going to be very quick. First of all, thank you to those folks, I think there were three of you, I appreciate it. Thank you to all of you, staff as well as volunteers, for your expertise and your patience. I have served, so I know what it's like, and I just really want to thank you. And I'm also going to tell you, I don't know anything about the powers of the zoning board, so I'm going to leave that to your expertise. My message to you, as someone who's lived here since the 1950s, because I grew up here, and I, some of my other people I grew up with are here, and we all have a same sentiment, and I want to assure you, I am not against change, I understand change, and I, like Mrs. Bell said, I know people need a place to live. What I can tell you, and what I want to tell you for you to keep in mind within the powers that you have, is that Ashland has always had a problem with scale. We bring things in, and they are just too big, and I can all go all the way back, if anybody knows what used to be called Parliament Court, and up on Upper Chestnut Street, those apartment buildings were built when I was a child, and instead of, if they had put in just like four buildings, they squeezed six in, and it was inappropriate, and it has always been inappropriate. Have we lived with it? Yes. But did it change the character in a negative way? Yes. And then throughout my lifetime here, every time we do something, we lose track of scale, and that's the only thing. If you have any way that this could possibly be scaled back, because it's too big, in my opinion, in my humble opinion, we mess up on scale. We need to move forward, we need change, I'm sure it will be beautiful, I appreciate all the input of all the people trying to make it beautiful, but please, if there's anything you can do about scale, that's the word I want to leave you with, and then I would say goodnight. Thank you.
Brian has pointed out to me that there is one person on Zoom that has their hand up, but first name is Amanda, and I think we had an Amanda speak, a different one?
Yes. Different Amanda.
Okay, well, okay, last person then, not the first time I've misspoken.
No problem. Thank you. Amanda Fleece, 18 Wesson Road. I'm a member of the Sustainability Committee, but I'm speaking for myself. Apologies if this has been brought up or addressed at previous comment periods. I appreciate the concern over the look of the building on the outside, but I'd also like to speak up for the innards of the building and the site. This is just a comment to the developer. The town of Ashland has passed warrant articles to adopt net zero codes with respect to carbon emissions and energy efficiency, and I would like to encourage them to make sure that there are sustainability accommodations in the plans, including electrification of the building, charging stations for EVs, bike parking to reduce cars, all sorts of sustainable practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless members of the board have any questions, that will close comment for this evening. I think we've discussed everything we had planned to discuss for this evening. That brings us to our next meeting. Next meeting is scheduled for August 26th. Council is going to be on vacation that week. Our next meeting, regular meeting after August 26th, would be September 9th. September 2nd is the date that we have to close the hearing, so unless I've got my dates mixed up, it would be helpful, I think, to, we could certainly have a meeting on the 26th, if you have something, I think you said you had landscaping that you were prepared to sort of present, and maybe you'd thrown, or.
Yeah.
Either have you, meeting on the 26th, but if we could extend the time.
We'll extend it to the 9th. I think it's important, as we get to the end, that council attends. That's not a huge ask, so I'll submit a letter, and we'll get that extended.
Okay, thank you, that would make it easier.
And I have a question, Mr. Chair, through you to council, because different towns handle this differently, and having never permitted anything in Ashland before as it relates to 40B, there's a couple ways, council knows better than I do, that we can handle kind of, you know, the conclusion of this. We could leave the hearing open, you know, recognizing that, no, we're not submitting any new information, but if we had to, if something came up, with the hearing still open, as you guys are deliberating and talking about the decision, in that instance, we would have the opportunity to submit if something were needed. The other question I'm asking, and you don't have to answer, is some boards, once the hearing's closed, they deliberate and they don't really ask any questions, and we're not allowed to participate. My sense is that's probably not the way this board operates, but, you know, I'm curious, because if that was the board's decision, I would, my inclination would be to leave the hearing open, for instance, for the entirety of September, while we all collectively talk about the decision and the like. So to me, I don't want to get necessarily hung up on the September 9th date, but I want the board to kind of understand that we're kind of done, you know, relative to new information, we think it's time to talk about the waivers, it's time to get a draft decision, and if that's being discussed in September, we're fine, you know, holding the hearing open. So I know I threw a lot at you, I don't know if you have answers, council probably understands what I'm saying, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
We haven't discussed it frankly, as a board, and with council, I know, just speaking for myself, I would be guided by what our council recommends. It would seem, keeping the hearing open-ended, so that we, if we needed additional information after the so-called deadline, we could get it, is appealing to me. I don't quite see a downside, but again, I will abide by my fellow board members and town council about how they wish to handle it.
May I?
By all means, please.
Offer a couple of comments? So if the applicant is offering to keep the public hearing open, I think it makes sense to, for all the reasons the applicant just stated, but also because, let's think about the practical side of this, we haven't deliberated. I have no feedback from the board whatsoever in order to prepare a draft decision, and a draft waiver list with a vote on each one of those requested waivers. And so when we get to the point where, let's just put aside the closing of the public hearing, where we get to the point where the board feels, okay, the record is pretty much done, and the applicant says, we're done submitting, so we know we're at the end of that process, that doesn't mean we have to close the public hearing. So then we could move into some preliminary deliberation, so I can get a straw poll, some feedback, in order to create a draft decision, not a binding one, not a final one, but just something that's a launchpad for your conversation. That would include, I usually do a matrix of the waivers for you to look at, and then we can use that to go down, condition by condition, finding by finding. And why it's really valuable to keep the public hearing open during that, is you may have questions for the applicant, they may have a technical comment, for example, no, actually, that's explained on sheet three, that's not new evidence, that's evidence that was already in the record, but it also might be a question that requires new evidence. Oh, I can clarify, let me get you a clarification on that. Public hearing is open, we can get some of that guidance. Also, when we go through the waivers, we might want an explanation. And then the last point is, sometimes, you know, as much effort as we put into drafting conditions that are accurate and complete and workable, sometimes we don't know, because we're not building the project, and so we want to hear back from the people that are actually going to move it forward to the next stage. Did I get this in a way that's practical, from your point of view, and from our building inspector's point of view, and everyone else is going to be involved in the process? So it's good to keep the public hearing open during that phase, so we can receive that feedback, adjust conditions, and get your guidance through that process. And then, when we get it to the point where it's pretty close to complete, we could close the public hearing in that point, and then it's just cleanup in the 40 days. And so that just makes it a much more fluid, easier process from my perspective. So I leave that as just a comment for the board to consider, I'm happy to follow your lead, however you want to proceed, though.
Just for clarification, during that period, as you were describing, does the public have an opportunity to comment as well, or are they basically?
If the public hearing is open, it's up to you. As long as the public hearing is open, the public could comment, but again, at the end of the day, it's up to the chair and your discretion, how much or how little, or on which topic.
That's fine.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think council did a great job summarizing. Another way to look at it is basically the 40-day deliberation is done while the public hearing is open.
Okay, that's fine. Why don't we take a straw poll of my fellow board members and see what council is describing feels to me, a reasonable way to proceed, to allow us to get the information, if there is information we think we need beyond what we already have, but also give the public an opportunity, if they have a question or a comment that hasn't been made and we feel, you know, we should have, give them an opportunity to put it in the record.
I totally agree, and I think it's a great way to move forward.
Dan?
Yeah, I think, given the complexity, it certainly makes sense, so I agree.
Stu and Ryan, your thoughts on that?
I also concur.
As do I, I think it will really be helpful.
Excellent. Okay, then why don't we, why don't we proceed that way? That still means that we have a meeting scheduled on the 26th, council won't be here, but if you have nothing specifically to add, why don't Counsel won't be here, but if you have nothing specifically to add, why don't we continue you to September 9th?
Why don't we continue to the 9th? I'll provide an extension beyond that date. We'll regroup on the 9th and see where we're at. I mean, just, and just to make it clear, and I'm glad we had this conversation, I think we're all aligned. You know, it's not our expectation during that deliberation that we're going to be like submitting new plans and all sorts of information. It would be a clarification or, you know, we, we might have missed something. So just a level set, and I think people realize that while the hearing is open, we're kind of getting to the point where we're like, we think we've given you everything that we have to give. So we have a little bit more. We've got to get you the renderings. We've got to get you the updated architectural, which are going to be pretty much consistent or will be consistent in pretty much everything you've already seen, but it'll be a nice little red ribbon bow on it. So, and we'll have that before the next time we meet on the 9th.
Fair enough. Motion to continue the hearing until September 9th.
So moved.
For a second.
I second that motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, then this hearing is continued until September 9th. Thank you, everybody. We do have another hearing on the agenda. They've been very patient. Whacker, if we could perhaps have a couple of minute recess to give people an opportunity to leave the room if they wish to before we go forward. Good evening and welcome back to the Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. After a brief recess, we move on to our next matter, which is the continuance of a public hearing of 61 Waverly Street, a 40B comprehensive permit. I'll read the notice. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will reopen the public hearing to hear the petition from the Gutierrez Company requesting a comprehensive permit per Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to allow for the development of one multifamily five-story building containing 226 apartment units and 391 parking spaces. Property in question is located at 61 Waverly Street, Assistant Map 15, Lot 12, in the Ashland WMUSD, quote, D, close quote, Wildwood Mixed Use Special District, quote, D, unquote, zoning. And we have had, the hearing was opened on March 25th, 2025, and we had originally thought the meeting was scheduled for July 22nd, but due to a mix-up, it wasn't. It was continued until this evening, and we are pleased to have the developer back before us again. And sir, if you could come up, step up to the mic, identify yourself and tell us where we are in this project and what latest information you might have for us.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name's Israel Lopez with the Gutierrez Company for the applicant. And I have several things on the agenda as follow-up items from our prior meeting.
Right.
I think I have a closeout of the transportation and traffic peer review. We, I believe the board received shortly after our last hearing
Mm-hmm.
A letter from the traffic engineer
We did.
With the final responses, if you will, to some of the last items that were discussed at the prior hearing. We're happy to discuss that and just give a quick overview of what the contents were from that outcome. Secondly, I believe the, since our last hearing, we received a peer review letter from the town's water and sewer consultant, and we've provided a response to that. And I have our engineer here tonight to speak on, answer any questions and discuss the town's peer review of the water and sewer for the project. And lastly, I believe we talked about some of the waivers that we had requested in our waiver request letter, and to the extent that the board wanted to discuss any of those waiver requests, we're happy to discuss those. And I have several members of our design team and project team here to answer any questions. So those were the things that I had at least on my agenda, but obviously happy to answer any, any other, address any other topics that the board may have.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask my fellow board members this. We did receive from NDW Transportation, a supplement to their final review and sign-off of the, of the traffic and transportation issues. Does anybody have any questions they would like to ask the applicant about that?
I don't have any questions.
Stu, Brian?
No, no questions here.
I do have one thing that continues to trouble me and that I've been back and forth on, and that is the issue of the electric light pole and where it's located. And I know you've gone to great extent to re-engineer the entrance exit so that you've got 16 feet coming in, you've got 16 feet going out, which is adequate for the safety issue. And there's an island sort of in the middle, and the traffic pole is in the middle. And I just envision, you know, a snowy rainy evening when coming down or going in, there's a slope on that hill and there's going to be a slope to it. Someone's going to go right into that pole, and I'm going to look at a comprehensive permit that I signed off on that allowed that to happen. And so I'm, I'm still troubled by that. And I'm not sure I can support a, that. The rest of the traffic, it's a difficult situation. I know we've had several of the neighbors talk about the traffic on Waverly Street and the effect that it will have on their unit, and it's a terrible, it's a terrible location, as it were. Hopefully, most of the traffic will find its way either through East Union during the proper time of day or onto Waverly Street during a proper time of day. What would be entailed in having to move the light pole to either side of the drive so that it's not facing a car coming or going? I'm assuming obviously you have to talk to Eversource
Yeah.
To get if they're okay, and I assume Eversource probably ultimately is the one that does the removal or
Yeah, so there are a number, it's, for something that would seem to be relatively simple, it's actually can get complicated because of the number of utility providers that are on one pole. So you have not only electric, but also telecom wires on there. Sometimes they're high voltage wires in addition to just the regular wires that service, you know, the local area. So you have to meet parameters for each of those different utilities, if you will, that are physically on that pole. But one of the things that we did in this last modification to the plant set that we sent to the traffic engineer was to place three bollards that would be around that pole to protect against, you know, that situation happening. So there would, you know, they essentially surround the pole and these, you know, poles would be eight inches in diameter, you know, set into cement, set back away from the pole, and it would really have to be, you know, a semi-truck turning into the site almost in order to get beyond, you know, that, that bollard and actually have any physical damage onto the, onto the actual pole itself. You know, unlikely that a car making that, slowing down and going towards the exit or turning into the site where they're already essentially at a, not at a stop, but certainly at a speed that would allow a turn into the site that, you know, that, that a bollard wouldn't be able to absorb, you know, a significant amount of that impact. But to answer your question, Mr. Chair, it, it can be done. Relocating the poles can be done. One of the, one of the things that factors into that is the distance away from the other poles. So it's sort of like a domino. If you move one pole, you might end up having to move several other poles in order to maintain a significant, the maximum required distance or at an intermediary pole someplace else, essentially to
Yeah.
Maintain the distance. So that's something that we don't control. The, the utilities sort of set how far or how close they want to have poles next to each other.
And have you submitted a drawing of the, the new exit that shows the bollards surrounding the
Yes.
So I've
Yes, that was included
Haven't been able to find it.
In the submission to MDM, the traffic peer reviewer, that they reviewed prior to issuing their latest letter.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I have, I have no further, anything?
Yes, I have another thing. I've been traveling on 135 at different times of the day just to get a feel for the road and where it'll be. And one of the things that I see that local neighbors have complained about is that granite cliff on the side of the road that makes the curve in the road. And I'm just wondering, you know, what would it take for you guys to move that so that in the future, you could have a turning lane on that side of 135 as well as someday sidewalks? I assume someday we're going to want to put sidewalks there, but from what I can see driving the road now, there's no room for it. And if we're going to build something this big, is it something that you guys can do at the same time? I don't know what's involved. I don't know if it gets, puts you over the threshold or what, but I wanted to mention it now.
Well, I think the, a number of the questions that we responded to that were posed to us through the Conservation Commission was precisely around blasting and the amount of blasting that would be done on site. Clearly, in order to remove that rock face would require a significant amount of blasting to, you know, cut that back.
That's what I figured.
That has implications for, you know, obviously more impact on the site, which is something that we've tried to minimize to the greatest extent possible. So, you know, the short answer is it, it would be a significantly greater amount of site work and impact to the site in order to accomplish that. In terms of the sidewalk, because of that, I think placing a sidewalk on the other side of the street would probably make more sense because, you know, it is a much flatter surface on that side. You don't have that condition on, on the north or south side of 130.
But we're putting all the
And
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
I think you mentioned 135, but I think you meant Waverly?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
I was responding to Waverly because that's what I thought you meant, but I just wasn't, just wanted to clarify.
It's the same thing, but yeah.
In that location, sorry, yes.
In that location, yeah. I, you know, I'm no expert or anything, but, you know, when I drive down and I've looked on both sides, and it seems to me that the side with all the people is going to be that side with
Yeah.
Granite outcroppings. I don't know how you put another crosswalk in there and try and get the sidewalk on the other side, which maybe someday there'll be sidewalks on both sides. But what I'm thinking is, we're making a big mess, right? We're, we're
Yeah.
Blasting, we're moving, we're doing all these things. And in my mind, now's the time to just go that extra mile and get that done as well. I don't know what it costs for you guys to do that. I'm just wondering if it's something that can be handled at the same time.
Yes, thank you. I mean, there are, our engineer was just noting that there are a number of utility poles along that entire length of roadway.
I saw that.
So all of those utility poles would need to be
Relocated.
Relocated. So it would be a significant undertaking, and at the end of the day, we'd be creating, if, if we were to do that, we'd be creating essentially a sidewalk from, you know, the stretch of our front door to the corner of, or to the end of our property line. And, you know, beyond that, they would connect to, you know, they wouldn't have anything to connect to.
I agree. I'm not even asking for a sidewalk. I'm just asking for room for a sidewalk someday when the town decides that we're, you know, the town has plans and they've been adding sidewalks to all of these major streets, especially where a lot of people are living. And if it was at least prepped
Mm-hmm.
There was room for it, if there was no granite in the way, that would be a huge thing. Seems like we might be moving a pole. Maybe we got to move a few. I, I don't know what it costs. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah. It would not be insignificant. I don't know what the cost is, but it would not be insignificant.
Yeah, I got that far. That's something I wish that you guys could look at and comment on. Look at a costing, see if it's something that you can fit in to your Look at a costing, see if it's something that you can fit into your project.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to this question. Have we heard anything directly from the utility with respect to what would be involved in that? Maybe it would be helpful just to hear the other side of the conversation as well. Not doubting. Not doubting, I'm just saying, there's a party to this transaction we haven't heard from, right? So maybe it would be worth asking that as well.
Ask the utility company?
Or ask for them to provide a comment or a letter or some communication that they've reached out to find out what would be involved, just so we have a better understanding
Okay.
Of what the ask really means to the applicant.
Right, so what he said.
Uh, we can, we can certainly do that.
Appreciate it.
Ian, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Stu, Ryan? Okay.
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have the Haley and Ward report that our peer review on water and sewer, they came in with several recommendations, and we have a response from Mr. Lopez and the Gutierrez Company dated August 6, 2025, enclosing a response from their water and sewer applicant. And Haley and Ward had recommended that the applicant install two water meters, if I'm using that term correctly, and also a sewer main gravity, I'm sorry, I misspoke on that, and also something to monitor the gravity of the, in the sewer gravity line. And basically, please correct me if I'm mischaracterizing, but the response was that you felt that the applicant was going to pay over $851,000 in fees to the town, assuming 226 units were approved for the apartment, and that, that was significant income that you should not be required to install temporary meters to, to measure water and sewer. Is that basically the response, or did I? Wasn't very artfully said, I know that much.
I just turned on the mic again. It was part of the response. We, we did agree to perform the water analysis tests that were also recommended. And we did look at the capacity. I think part of the rationale, and I'll let, you know, our engineer speak more to this, but I think part of the rationale, and certainly your peer, Haley and Ward, if they're on the line can respond to it, or correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of the rationale behind some of the requests was to look at whether there was sufficient capacity, at least for the sewer, that our project would be feeding into. And what we've done is done a preliminary analysis that suggests that there is ample capacity within that sewer. And in addition to that, I think the, the, the larger request, if you will, in terms of looking at capacity for the run of sewer between our project and, you know, say, the Chestnut Hill Pump Station, which is about two and a half miles, you know, from our, from our site, I think that, that scope is the scope where, you know, we feel that's really the kind of the province of the town to monitor that. We, and, you know, we completely understand the rationale and the desire to do that, but we think that that was really more appropriately done by, by the DPW.
Let me ask our town planner a question. Jasmine, the, the reports from the Gutierrez Company came in dated August 6th. Have we sent those out to Haley and Ward and asked them to respond?
Haley Ward has received those, and I don't, I don't believe we did receive a response
No, I was going to say, I don't, I don't recall receiving a response yet. It'd be less than a week, so
No, but we do have
Would not be unexpected not to have received a response.
Bethany Ordung on, I believe, from Haley Ward.
Yep, yes, hi. This is Bethany Ordung. I am, work with Haley Ward, I'm the peer reviewer.
Hi, Bethany.
Hi, I'm sorry, my video doesn't work right now. But I, I did receive their response. I did read through their comments and their response. I did not get a chance to really evaluate the sewer calculations that were done by their engineer yet. But yes, just to kind of clarify what we had asked of them is to install sewer flow meters and just evaluate what the actual existing flow is through that stretch. And for them to TV inspect the existing sewer so that the town would be able to evaluate that section and determine whether or not any repairs were made to it, and potentially ask them to contribute to the repairs. On the water system, we had, you know, asked, it's pretty standard comment and something that they would usually typically do for this type of development, for them to do hydrant flow tests, and that just confirms the water supply in the area is, you know, what we're expecting it to be and what it needs to be. And it also confirms that they have adequate fire flow for whatever emergencies might arise.
Okay, and so there will be a written response coming at some point after you've given and had an opportunity to review everything, is that fair to say?
Yes, yes.
Then why don't we table this until after we receive that written response, and then we can have more of a, a conversation and at least on this end with a little bit more knowledge about what we're all considering? That's okay with you?
Sure.
Okay. And was there something else we were awaiting from you or that you had? I don't think so. I do note that for the, for the record, there had been an issue raised by one of the neighbors concerning the stormwater manhole that was outside of their property, and maintained a photo of it, and the question came whether it was actually connected to an outlet pipe, because none could be seen in the photo of the catch basin. And it turns out that the DPW inspected it, and turns out that the pipe is in the opposite direction than what was originally thought. Is that fair to say, Jasmine?
Evan, would you say that's a correct representation of what we found on the site?
Okay.
Because I, I just repeated what Kevin Langmeyer had explained.
Right, so they checked it out, and in fact, there is an outflow pipe. It's just going in the opposite direction than the plans that it was supposed to go in. So we at least have it there, so that solves that problem.
Hi, I'm Evan White, the town engineer with the Ashland DPW. Yeah, that's my understanding as far as where that pipe goes. It was going in a direction that we weren't aware of, connects to another basin and then discharges, I believe, across the street from the site in question.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your input on that. So that clarifies one question that, that we had. Before we ask for public comment at this point, anybody else have any other questions?
I don't.
Okay. Stu and Ryan, you all set up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And why don't we open it to public comment? Again, if you wish to be heard, stand up here by the side. If you wish to be heard on the Zoom, just raise your hand, and Jasmine will let you in, and we'll alternate on a one-on-one basis. And we have Mr. Johnson, I believe it is.
Johnson for Roberts Road. Just on the question of the pole, it'd be interesting to find out how much you would, or how many poles have to be moved. Is it just one? Because it just seems that hole in the middle with school buses is going to be, I would expect a few hundred kids living in that 216-unit building. So there's going to be school buses going in and out of there. So that pole really bothers me. Also the fact that the sidewalks don't exist on either side of Route 135, Waverly Street. There's going to be all these kids and people. It just seems like Mr. Forrestal was saying, if they can at least prep their area for sidewalks to be built by either them or Ashland in the future, because right now on 135, there's no bike lanes, there's no sidewalks, and there's going to be kids walking around, and people will be in danger on 135. I lived there, right on the corner, grew up there, I live there now. It's, it's a tough spot.
Bless you.
Then, bless you. The irrigation on the water and sewer, I was just wondering, is that going to affect the water pressure? I mean, is that? I, I see there's a pump over near the Wildwood Cemetery. It seems like something's going on with the water pumping station, so I just hope that we're not going to lose a lot of water pressure in that neighborhood. There's 70 houses in my neighborhood, Roberts Road, Dean Road, that's right, right next door to this proposed project, so that's another concern of mine, is the water pressure is going to be affected by this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Looks like there's one person on Zoom, Donna Flaherty, that raised her hand.
Uh, yes.
Oh. That's up. It's Mr. Flaherty.
Yes, this is Paul Flaherty. Does this sound okay, everyone? I have some weird noises.
You can mute, mute one of the mics perhaps? Here we go.
Oh, anyway.
Nope. Are there two separate devices open?
Is that better?
Yeah, I think we're all set now.
Okay, Paul, this is Paul Flaherty. And I'd just like to comment on the drainage situation from the catch basin that's in front of 63 Waverly Street. And that line runs to a second catch basin, which has never been maintained, and it's completely filled with dirt. So that whole system is going to have to be cleaned and verified before anything can be added to it.
Okay, well, again, it appears that the DPW department has investigated the situation and is aware of what the conditions are and what may, may be needed, and that's something that I would anticipate. Responsibility for that would be worked out as part of an ultimate hearing decision. And again, we keep the DPW involved with that. Mr. White has been on top of the situation since it was called to his attention, and we'll make sure that that gets adequately addressed as part of the, the ultimate decision.
Thank you. Thank you. And one more comment, that the
Sure.
The area that's been discussed with the, with the stone cliff on the side of the road has always been a very bad corner, and it would be, I think, a good idea for the town to take advantage of this opportunity to, to give a little bit of more safety to that corner.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what
To add more safety to the corner?
Oh, okay.
And if it means relocating a couple of power lines or that it doesn't seem like that difficult.
Are we all set? Okay, that will close the public comment for this evening. Mr. Lopez, if you want to step back up to the mic, is there anything further that we needed to discuss tonight? I don't want to go over any of the review, any of the requests for waivers at this point. It's been a long evening. I just assumed do most of those at once when we sit down to do a good stretch of them.
Okay.
And I think we're still in the fact gathering information stage of the proceeding. So if we can hold off on that, I know you, you submitted the waiver back in, what was it, back in June?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the current one that's on the table?
Correct.
Listen, I don't think we have anything on our agenda tonight to discuss with you. We've got the next meeting that we have to schedule, and if you were listening to the discussion at the prior time, council is going to be away on the next scheduled meeting, August 26th, which doesn't mean that we can't meet, however, because we have a lot further to go in this matter than the other one did. So I would hope that by August 26th, we would have our peer review from Water and Sewer and Haley Ward back by then, and perhaps be able to talk about some of the, their maybe engineering issues or any of the other issues, and then get on to maybe some of the waivers at that point as, as well. So if you folks are available on the 26th, that would seem to be the next, next meeting date and a convenient time for us, and we would see to it that rather than be the last hearing on the agenda, we put you first and have two other hearings that I think we have scheduled for that night, special permit hearings. We could put, put them second and third, so you wouldn't have to be at the end.
Sure, that, that That does, and I was going to suggest that since we've looked at this recently, that we provide a summary of, as it relates to the storm, to the water and sewer review, that we give you an over, a kind of a summary of what's contained within our response letter, but I think given the hour, and it's been a long night, and we're going to come back in two weeks.
I, for one, would find that very helpful. Anytime there's a summary with all of the information that we've been given in all of these projects, if they can be reduced to a summary that adequately summarizes the information before us and makes it easier for us to understand and decide.
So we, we were happy to do that verbally tonight, but we can do that at the next hearing.
Why don't we do it next, at the next meeting? Because if you told me verbally tonight, tomorrow I'm going to forget it. Whereas if it's in writing, I'll remember it. Yeah, I think we have a, we need a motion then to continue the hearing until Tuesday, August 26th.
So moved.
That will be at 7:00 P.M.
I second that motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel Maslow, in favor.
Aye, Stuart Segal, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, okay, that concludes the evening and and, okay, that's good. Now we have two more items on the agenda.
Yes.
And let's go right into them without taking a recess if that's
Would you just say this one? This is the one you can sign?
Okay. We We have before us the very first decision drafted by our new town planner for the town of Ashland. It's not her first rodeo, she's done many decisions in her career, but this is the first one for the town of Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. And it is a special permit request of 167-169 Pleasant Street. Petition was James McDonald. This was a matter that was originally called forward back in March, and for whatever reason, got continued a number of times and basically was not prosecuted by Mr. McDonald, the applicant. And at our hearing the last time, we come to agreement that we would deny the petition without, we would deny the petition without prejudice, and that's what the decision that was drafted. And again, this is one of those silly, not silly, but it's unusual, where you're denying the application, but the motion that we have to act upon is to approve the plan, and then people vote to deny it. So that's what the decision has done. Did you receive any comments from anybody? I know it got distributed, I think, this morning. Everybody have an opportunity to review it. The three people voting on this were going to be Brian, Dan, and myself. Any? Read it, okay.
Yeah, I actually have a new email address I gotta distribute to everyone.
Oh, okay.
I'll get that over.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
So you didn't get any of this?
I did not.
Oh, okay.
I'll email you.
Do we want to table this until the next meeting then? I'm not sure there's any urgency to it.
If it's a denial...
If people haven't had an opportunity to read it, let's make it. Public hearing closed last time.
Let's not use them all.
Will we table this?
Okay, there's a motion to table it until our next meeting of...
August 26.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Aye, John Drifthen, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Okay.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether the non-voting members vote to table it or not. I think it's appropriate that you do, which is fine. Next item is approval of the minutes for July 22, 2025. Those were sent out by Melissa last week when she forwarded the agenda. Any proposed changes or corrections to the minutes submitted? Anybody have any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes for July 22, 2025 as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Aye, John Drifthen, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. Next item is staff updates at administrative matters. Jasmine, anything to report?
The report would be that the 55 West Union was intended to be advertised for this evening, but the newspaper somehow mistakenly did not run the second advertisement, so we re-advertised for the August 26 meeting, which is the very next meeting. The applicant isn't available, their whole team isn't available that night, so it will likely be John Dudley just coming on to request a continuance until the September 9th. And they anticipate September 9th, the full presentation, this is the full opening essentially of the hearing, so...
Would it be appropriate to save Mr. Dudley a trip to come to a meeting just to request a continuance if he submits in advance a written request?
I told him he certainly may.
That we would open the hearing and then allow his request.
I would absolutely let them know that, and I think he would be welcome to that.
That, to me, seems reasonable, no reason for the gentleman to come here just to do that. Okay. The only thing I would add as far as an administrative matter is concerned, that the terms of the associate members are all one-year terms that expire August 31. One of the three member terms also expires each August 31. Sue Roby, the select board assistant, sent out, I believe, to everybody last month whether they wished to be reappointed. I hope each of you got such a request, and I hope each of you responded in the affirmative. I believe the select board is voting at their meeting next week to reappoint people. My term is also up as of August 31 of this year. I did indicate I would be willing to be reappointed if they so chose. So I do hope everybody wanted to step, keep on board, because we have two active 40B hearings ongoing, and we need to keep three people eligible to vote on each one, and I think with respect to the 1060 Main Street, we may be down to three at this point. Be that as it may, I hope you did get notified by Susan. If you didn't and you do wish to be reappointed, please reach out to her this week. That's all I have. Okay, then how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Aye, John Drifthen, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you all very much. Thank you, WACA.